Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on for our health department update. And we have Anna Roth here, who is our health director, as well as Dr. Chris Farnatano, our health officer. And it looks like Anna is up first.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Anna Roth. I'm the Director of Health Services. Thank you for having me here today. I wanted to start today off by recognizing that today, we just actually finished last week National Nurses Week, and today is actually International Nurses Day. And I want to thank all the nurses who are out there, who are working, doing screening, testing, case and contact investigation, caring for patients and people within the communities, and everything else that nurses do, including some of them that are in administrative jobs, like me. We are, we're clapping for them every night, along with the other health, healthcare workers and first responders and essential workers. And we just want to recognize all the work that they're doing every day, and especially today, across our county and the world. Thank you for letting me come again and give a COVID-19 update. I want to just remind you that we've made a lot of progress, but today, we stand with 1,048 cases. Currently, we have 20 in the hospital, eight of those are in ICU. Sadly, we've lost 32 residents here in Contra Costa County, and our deepest condolences go out to their families and loved ones. We actually have had 894 people recover. And for those who are watching our website, which I hope you are, at cchhealth.org, and our dashboards, that data, the recovered, will be showing up either later today or tomorrow. We're going to start posting that. We've currently conducted 8,000, 18,669 tests. And I want to talk today a little bit about our focus today will be about moving forward. As you know, last week, or the week before last, the Bay Area health officers, seven health officers in Bay Area counties and jurisdictions extended the shelter in place order. But along with that, they actually put out indicators. I know a lot of people are asking, when will this be over? And I think that in the, in the attempt to demystify when it will be and what the health officers wanted to think, see, they, they put out five indicators. And they're really indicators around our infrastructure. So those indicators were the total number of cases within the community. It was around hospital capacity, making sure we had enough hospital capacity. Testing, they wanted to see, testing, appropriate testing for the population occurring daily. That testing, also with that came tracing and investigation, disease investigation. And then finally, back to, I think, what we've been talking about since the beginning, which was making sure that we had enough PPE. And I'm going to talk to you about the first four indicators and some of our work. And Dr. Farnatano is going to talk to you about the PPE, and then sort of give you a look ahead, and our community a look ahead. So I wanted to talk first about the progress on the cases, the number of cases. So we have more than 1,000 cases here in Contra Costa. Yesterday, we had no new cases, though, which is in part because of our community abiding by the shelter in place order. And I think that we all need to acknowledge the progress, and this is an incredible feat for such a populated region as Contra Costa County. We've been averaging 11 to 15 new cases a day over the past two weeks. And new cases across the Bay Area, six counties, have declined about 7% for the past two weeks. Our hospitalizations, we currently, as I said, have 20 in the hospital with eight in the ICU. This is actually down from our peak of 40 a couple of weeks ago. And also, the six counties in the Bay Area have, have had a 7% decline in their hospitalizations over the past week. And this is important, looking, you know, week by week now, because you know the health officers were wanting to look at current data, and they're starting to get some of that data. As we prepared for, we, I know we've talked a lot about alternative care sites. I just wanted to stress, in addition to the alternative care sites, one of the goals was to support people who are experiencing homelessness. And we, we have, have secured five hotels with a total of 586 hotel rooms for those homeless, as well as two hotels for healthcare workers with 137 rooms for them. Both of those, both sets, both for, we have hotels within both of those two groups that can take COVID positive if needed. Testing has been a really big discussion over the last few weeks, and I wanted to talk about that and spend a little bit of time. Most of my time is going to be about testing and tracing. We've expanded our testing over this last week, and hopefully, the community's seen we've been ramping it up. But over the last week, we've, we've greatly expanded the testing. First thing is, we've opened up the requirements. So actually, you don't have to have symptoms to get a COVID-19 test. We've expanded that to anyone who wants to be tested, regardless of their symptoms. Guidance has been released with recommendations, also including what our testing in skilled nursing facilities and other congregate settings, and I'll come back to that in a minute. And we're also, we are recommending that people, you can come to cchhealth.org and find, find our recommendations around testing and the number to make an appointment, which is 1-844-421-0804. I'm going to say that one more time. Now that I've given you that number, I do want to stress, we would like you to go to your health provider, if you, if you have a different provider. We'd like you to start there. But we, we don't want you to run into barriers, because we want people tested in our county. That said, we've actually opened, in the last week, in addition to the sites that we talked about earlier, so currently, we have a total of nine sites. Four of those sites, we opened four new county sites last week. Three with the state at Heather Farms in Walnut Creek, the Penole Library, Liberty High School in Brentwood, and then one run by the county at Bishop Ranch in San Hermone. So that's a total now of nine sites, because we still have our sites at the West County Health Center, the Pittsburgh Health Center, the Antioch Health Center, Martinez Health Center, and Concord Bates. One of those sites is open seven days a week. That's in Concord at Bates Avenue. We, our call line, as you know, we, we opened, and many know this, we opened our, we opened these sites last week, and the call line was greatly impacted. So we, we did get feedback that there were long waits, and I want to apologize to the community for those waits. We, and I want to let you know, we've tripled the number of lines that are receiving calls, and we've added staff, including 10 more, starting today. We've also implemented a callback number, so you should be able to request the system to call you back and hold your place in line. And we had people calling people back until 8 o'clock last night. Yesterday, which was our largest day of testing, where we, at the county, conducted 552 tests. And just to give you a little sense of that, that on the 3rd of May, we had conducted 41 tests that day. So we're, we're really expanding the testing. We need to get to 2,200 tests a day to have enough testing to detect, to detect and understand what's going on within our, our community, particularly for asymptomatic transmission. And currently, with our six county-run sites and the three state sites, we're, we're working with the assumption that we'll be at a 1,500 a day. And that's with just the county and the state. We're working with the area hospitals, and we had a call with them last week to ask them to hone in on how many sites that they can do a day. So I'm, I'm hoping to come back with you with a little bit more on the capacity that our partners, such as John Muir and Sutter Delta, San Hermone, and Kaiser, kind of, we want to get some numbers from them. And we know that all of those facilities are working also to bring up testing. So we're feeling that it's a, it's a realistic goal to get to 2,200 a day. I told you I would come back to the congregate living facilities. This is, we've, we've actually developed a procedure around universal testing within congregate living. And what I mean when I talk about congregate living, I'm talking about places like the detention facilities or jail, skilled nursing facilities, and assisted living. So we've actually drafted a toolkit for the skilled nursing facilities, and that's in final review with our health officers. Currently, we have, we have 31 of those facilities, and we've recommended that they are tested once a month, everyone. That includes the, the people living there, as well as the people working there. And we're working with those facilities to implement that. We're also helping those facilities with PPE, with PPE needs, as well as fit testing and distribution of PPE. We are also working with the detention facilities or the jails, where we're doing, we have been, we have actually been doing symptom screening and quarantining of all new inmates for the first 14 days. And we were testing those with symptoms. Now, we've actually moved to testing everyone on booking. So we'll be testing everyone. And we do actually have plans to escalate our surveillance within the detention facilities, and we're, we're finalizing that plan. But it, you know, it's with, it's really with a goal of reducing any possibility of the virus entering that facility, no matter which way. So we really are looking at all the different entry points, and that could include staff and others who enter into those facilities. And we, so we're working on those, finalizing that now. But for now, all who are coming in through booking are also getting tested, and then they, they go to a separate specialized unit for the first 14 days. We have 60 assisted living facilities, and those are facilities with 10 people or more. And we're also, our public health department will be testing those, those people once a month, people who are working and living in those places. And that will be about 5,000 tests a month. And then finally, we're monitoring for outbreaks across all of these facilities. And then we'll be also kind of coming back and retesting as needed. We have a risk scoring, and it's sort of a color system, so it ranges sort of in blue all the way up to red. And we'll be, we have a different testing kind of aggressiveness based on what's going on within the facility. So that's kind of testing in a nutshell, and I, I can answer questions later when we're done. But that's kind of, I wanted to give you an overview on testing. There's a couple of things before I get on to case contact, case and contact investigation, and that is, I wanted to give, just talk about a couple of cautions. We've been hearing about a mandatory testing letter going out to people, and that it's a requirement to receive social services or EHSD services. That is not the case, so that, that would be a fraudulent letter. So I just want to say that there are some scams out there, unfortunately, and we are not requiring, and EHSD and social services is not requiring that you get tested in order to receive services. So if you're getting that letter, that's not coming from an official source. And also, I just, I also wanted to mention, and I, I hope Dr. Farnatano will talk about this a little bit more, but the antibody testing. Currently, there are eight tests that are approved, have emergency approval from the FDA, and there are a lot of, I think, you know, there are a lot of agencies or companies who are soliciting or advertising antibody testing, and just urging people to check if those have FDA emergency approval. At this point, we are not recommending antibody testing beyond sort of for research, although, again, I've said this before, and I'll, I'll say again, I think that that science is advancing rapidly, and we hope to be doing that. In fact, we actually have one of the antibody tests that has been emergency approved, and we're in, we're currently in the process of validating that with the state. And so we, we hope to have an update of that. It does take extensive validation. And so I just want to caution people, when they're thinking about testing and they're hearing about this testing, really go to, please go to cchhealth.org to, as the source of truth, because there's a lot of people out there who are, there's a lot of information out there, and it's not all vetted. And, and information is moving fast and growing. It's sort of fast and wide, and the internet's a big place. And so again, we're really doing, we're working really hard to organize the vetted and validated information from sources like the CDC, California Department of Public Health, as well as local, other local health departments, to make sure you have that organized for you and available for you, again, at cchhealth.org. I want to talk about, and I'll end with case, case and contact investigation, also known as tracing. Our goal is to reach 90% of all, of 90% of contacts, 90% of cases and 90% of their contacts, and make sure 90% of them can safely isolate or quarantine. So 90, 90, 90. We're not there yet, but we have a plan to scale up and get there. Currently, we, originally, as you remember, we had 14 people doing disease investigation, including tracing. We actually upped that to 75 people, and we plan to add, to get to an additional 200 staff. And we're doing that by reassigning county staff. That includes some librarians. We're recruiting volunteers, and I know that many have asked us about this. I'm going to read a, an email address, and it will also be at cchhealth.org. For those people who are interested in volunteering, you can email covid19volunteers@cchhealth.org. Again, that's covid19volunteers@cchhealth.org, no spaces. And then we're also going to be, we've, we've heard that the state is going to be creating a tracer corps, a work, some group of workers that will be available. We plan to request for those tracers when those are made available. We, we have not yet seen any details on how you do that requesting. We also plan to hire additional employees as needed, including 47 positions that was currently on today's consent calendar that you just approved. So thank you very much for that. And we may need more, and I'll be back as we move forward to keep you posted about that. The state opened an academy that's run by, a tracing academy that's run by UCSF, and we, we sent 12 people to the first week last week. Three of those were librarians, and nine were public health staff. We have 25 staff slated for the next weekly training. And we did request to be a pilot site for the new free software being rolled out by the state to improve the contact tracing and ability, and, and our, and tracing and investigation. And actually, we heard from the state last night, and though we, we don't have a hard yes yet, we have a, we want to talk to you. We are very interested in working with you, and then we have a call with them this, later on today, to talk about the current, our current readiness, our current infrastructure, what we hope to aim. And hopefully, I'll be back with you later this week to give you good news about, hopefully being chosen as a pilot site. And I want to recognize both our state delegation, all of the members of the board, and others who advocated for us to be one of those pilot sites. So we're, we're, we're hopeful that that will be very good news. I wanted, I asked Dr. Farnatano to talk about PPE, and then looking forward. We know that there are a lot of milestone days coming up, graduations and other events that are coming up. And he's going to be talking about some of that, as well as sort of how Contra Costa and the, how Contra Costa is looking to proceed in the context of the other Bay Area counties. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. So thank you for, thank you for having us again today for this update, and I would like to call our county health officer, Dr. Chris Farnatano, up now.
Thank you, Anna, and welcome, Chris. And then we'll save board questions till Chris has completed, and then we'll also go to our public callers after that.
Thank you, supervisors. So our final indicator of our five indicators is that hospitals, nursing homes have sufficient personal protective equipment, the masks, the gowns, the gloves, to protect themselves and their, their staff and their patients. So we are still getting a lot of requests for PPE from hospitals into our emergency operations center, from hospitals, from congregate living facilities, like nursing homes and assisted living facilities, and group homes, from clinics, from private medical and dental offices, as they begin to start resuming a lot of the routine medical and dental care that had been postponed in the past couple of months, as well as from our first responders. The most in-demand items we are still getting, that are still in the shortest supply, are those N95 masks that are, for those high-risk settings, as well as disinfecting supplies and medical-grade gowns. In the past week alone, we received 329 resource requests into our logistics center of our emergency operations center. We filled 231 of those 329 requests. To give you a breakdown, 30 requests came from medical facilities, 139 requests came from dental facilities, 34 requests came from congregate care facilities, including, we've developed a sort of hub-and-spoke distribution system, where we've got organizations, we get, deliver cash, and then they distribute the, the supply to their member organizations. We've gotten 30 requests, fairly substantial requests, from, from hospitals for different types of personal protective equipment. And we've got 67 requests from other branches, including the first responder branches and other county departments, including the branches involved in setting up and supporting these testing sites that Director Roth mentioned. I especially want to thank the Board of Supervisors for helping to coordinate volunteers to help retrofit a bunch of duckbill masks that we had gotten, that their elastic straps were out of date, and, and so replacing those elastic straps and repurposing them, and finding homes for them. So with your efforts, we found homes for 90,510 of these duckbill masks. So we, this week, we shared with our schools, working closely with Lynn Mackey, our superintendent of schools, new guidelines on how schools can have within the guidelines and the confines of the health order, graduation recognitions, drive-by-type graduation recognitions for schools that are trying to plan some kind of recognition for their graduates during this very difficult time. We're also working on plans for type of drive-in, vehicle-based gatherings that we're planning on releasing within the next week. We are still looking at the data every day. We're looking at these five indicators every day, looking at how the data is changing on this epidemic, both in our county and across the Bay and the state. Governor Newsom has been very clear that his plan for opening up the economy in phases acknowledges the three different speeds for different parts of the state. Some of the very remote counties in California that have a very widely spread-out population and very few cases of coronavirus so far, may be deciding that may be eligible to certify that because they have few or no cases and no recent deaths, and they have sufficient testing to detect cases, that they may be allowed to open up at a faster pace than the rest of the state. Other counties will be moving in tandem with the state's pace of opening up state by, step by step. And a third group, which the governor and the state recognizes represents urban counties, including the Bay Area counties, that have the, both the highest number of cases so far and the highest density of population, and they'll need to move a little bit slower than the rest of the state to prevent a surge of cases that we're not yet prepared to identify, track, and management, and manage. So the, the seven Bay Area health officers representing the largest jurisdictions in the Bay Area, we put out a statement two weeks ago that we would be following these five indicators that we just reviewed about cases, hospitalizations, PPE, testing, and contact tracing, to determine when we can safely loosen our stay-at-home orders. Based on progress on those first two indicators of hospital cases and overall new cases trending downward, we loosened up our stay-at-home order this past Monday, May 4th, to allow all outdoor construction, or to allow all construction, outdoor work, and some outdoor recreation. And we are making progress with the three other indicators, but we are not yet where we want to be before a fuller opening up of the stay-at-home order. We want to give a few weeks, since we made this recent change just eight days ago, to see the effect of this increased business and social activity on the spread of COVID-19 across the Bay Area before substantial loosening of additional business sectors like the drive-in retail, or the drive-up retail that is now allowed in the state order, will be loosened up in the local orders. And so we're really looking at that data on a day-by-day basis, and working in parallel with the other health officers across the region. So that ends my report, and I'll take any questions. I think Director Roth's here for questions as well.
Okay. Questions from board members. John, go ahead.
Anna, I didn't quite get, I thought I had heard this, that the making appointments for testing, that there is an ability to do that online in addition to the phone call. Can you talk about that?
There's, that we do not have online appointment, appointment capability for testing for COVID-19.
We don't. Because I, some people, some folks were posting that they had, went through an online portal and had an appointment at the Penole Library, and I hadn't heard that, and that's why I was wondering.
We, that may, yeah, the Penole Library is a state, is a state testing site, and we'll double-check that we understand all their workflows, and we'll come back, we'll make sure it's prominently posted on our site, if there's, if there's something the state's offering.
Yeah, I mean, is, is there an ability, is, does this, for those two state, well, I guess there is, what, three state-run sites?
Three, three state sites.
Are people able to make their appointments online? Could you get back to us?
We'll, we'll find out.
And it sounds like it's not possible for the, for the other six county-operated sites, correct?
Correct. That would be the 1-844 number I gave.
Will that be something available in the future?
We don't have it planned, but we can look into it. We don't have it planned because, well, I don't know exactly what the, I wouldn't, I would, I don't want to speak to the workflow on the fly, but we're not just, we're not just providing this for our members, so I'm not sure how we would technologically do that, so.
And I, and I, and I know that it's free, but you bill health insurance. There've been some cases we've heard of people getting bills in the mail for, how much for, I don't know, what's the cost for the test? What's the, what's the cost for the test that you're billing?
We're, we're not sure. So we'll find that out, too. But it should be covered by your health insurance, or it should be, or by ours. So in order to operate in California, the health insurers have to pay for it. That was a governor, that was an executive order.
Are they getting reimbursed by the federal government when they do this, or they're just paying it out of their own revenues and proceeds?
These are great questions, and perhaps we can jot them down, and we'll come back with a, you know, I'd like to research it, so I don't answer on the fly.
Yeah, I mean, because we're starting to get a lot of questions about this, and so one is, which is online, which is not? Second, what, how much, how much is being billed for the insurance company? And for people who get a bill in the mail, it's confused them, right? So they're going to submit it to their insurance company, or are you directly billing the insurance company? It's caused some people to hesitate going in, because they've heard stories of people getting billed for this. I'm just saying, it could be an obstacle. I've seen it a lot, even, we posted- I've seen it a lot, even, we posted on Nextdoor about this. There were so many questions from people about, well, gee, I got a mail, and some got a bill in the mail, and somebody else said, well, I don't want to go in if I have to pay. So I think it's an obstacle. We just need to be clear in what we say.
It looks like Deputy Director Jensen has actually a little bit more information on this than she would, because her, she has a deep background in public health, so I'm actually going to toss over to her, because she's been working a lot on the testing.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Good morning. I'm Erica Jensen. I'm the Deputy Director of Health Services. The Optum State Test Sites, which are located at the Pinot Library, at Heather Farms, and at Liberty High School, you can register online for those sites. So we'll make sure that the link is on our website for that. In terms of the billing, so for people who came...
You'll post that, you'll post that link today, because I don't think it's on your website now, right?
Okay. We will, yes, we will do that. The second piece of your question, Supervisor Joya, was about billing. So for some people who came to our Contra Costa Health Services community test sites, they may have mistakenly received a bill. So we fixed that on Friday, we adjusted all their accounts, and we contacted those people who had contacted us about their bill. So those should all be forgiven.
They're not getting billed, okay?
No, they're not.
And, so you're billing the insurance company directly?
For those that we can, yes.
And, and you're not sending people any bills?
As of, yes, as of Friday, we are not sending people any bills. We fixed that problem.
Okay. And you're billing insurance companies directly? And are we getting reimbursed by the federal government for our cost of providing these tests, or we'll be seeking federal government reimbursement?
So if we can get reinsurance through, paid through insurance, we are doing that. For the other ones, I think we're trying to figure out what the reimbursement will be from the federal government. For those people that have private health insurance, and the health insurance may not pay us for the tests, then I'm not sure what's going to happen to those costs.
Got it. So, but, so the state executive order requires health insurers to not charge for this.
Correct.
I thought there was some federal action a couple, a month or two ago, saying the tests are free. That's why I was wondering whether it was the federal government paying for it, or just requiring that they're free.
Yeah, we haven't gotten any information about a revenue source from the federal government for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Other questions? Karen, and then Diane.
Thank you. Erica, can you come back to the podium? Thank you. Relative to billing, I appreciate and understand that you are, you, meaning Contra Costa Health, is no longer sending out bills as of this last Friday. However, I have heard from constituents that they have gotten a bill. Are you, did I understand you to say you were communicating with them and reversing those charges, or what do they need to do to make sure that they are not billed?
My understanding is we are communicating with all of them and have reversed those charges already.
That's, okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Diane, please go ahead.
Thank you. So related to a public comment earlier, there was a request about soccer, and I know we have some related camp types of, are you guys exploring some of these other ideas as far as being able to allow sports types of activities?
Yeah, the, the local order can't be any looser than, more permissive than the state order, so most of those type of contact sports and things are really not permitted under the state order. So some of those are in what the governor calls as Phase 2, and some of them are in Phase 3. So, so we really need to, you know, wait on the, on the state to move through their phases before those could be allowed locally.
Great. I just wanted to ask, since that had been brought up. We were talking about the testing, and so what is the wait time to get a test? And the other question I have is, is it clear for people who have, say, Kaiser or other health insurance policies to know where they should go for testing? Because it sounds like you can call the state, and you can just go do one of those sites, or you can call the county, and then the county has to figure it out. But I know Kaiser has testing, and they're doing a huge job of trying to expand their ability to process testing, and I'm sure John Muir and Sutter are doing that as well. My question is, if I'm a consumer, and I'm trying to be tested and be responsible and create the least amount of paperwork and, you know, all of that, how do I figure out how to get tested without having to call my doctor?
Yeah, the first place I would recommend people to go is to their own provider. A lot of providers have a, you know, a call center or a online way to send messages to their provider and ask for a test. We have been working closely with the community providers, Kaiser, John Muir, Sutter, the large systems, really encouraging them to also open up their testing to anyone who wants to test, symptoms or no symptoms. So, so many people can get a test through their own provider network, so would encourage people to, you know, reach out that way. But we do have these county and state sites for folks who aren't able to access testing, you know, through their own provider. But definitely would encourage, start with your own provider, the ones who know you first, and then if that, if you're not, you're finding obstacles there, then the county and state sites are there for you as well.
So I guess that, like, if you're with Kaiser, but what if you're with, like, one of the Blue Shield, or the Blue Cross, or Health Net, or all of that? Are you saying call your insurance company, or call your doctor's office? I mean, because as far as providers go, you may be in one thing or another, and you may not be that clear on who your provider would be.
Yeah, that's a good question, and, you know, most providers on those different insurance plans are part of larger networks, and somewhere in those networks, they have testing sites. So I wouldn't, I would work with your provider, your primary care provider, and start there, and they can usually direct you within their kind of network of system, rather than going to the health insurer. So that's where I would start.
I would, I would just recommend that as much as we can to give people, like, if you're this, then do this, if you're this, do this, because that'll help create less confusion as far as, like, the billing that we just talked about. And what is the wait time to get a test at this point for people generally?
I don't have an exact number, but I think we've been having a lot of access of the actual testing appointments. So I know at the end of last week, people were getting tests that day or the next day if they wanted them. If they wanted to come in a few days later, they could get an appointment at that point. I haven't heard anything that it's not, hasn't, hasn't gotten any more difficult to get an appointment. So once you get through the line, then they're able to give people appointments when they want one.
Great, thank you. Last question is, there was a comment earlier, and public comments related to the uptick in suicides, domestic violence, and we've been following those kind of, that data, and we haven't seen huge jumps, and we're still trying to kind of watch the trends. But the one question that I haven't asked that I kind of flagged is, are we seeing increases in calls on our suicide hotline? And if you don't, if you don't know, then that'll be something I can follow up with you later.
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that, but we will research that and get back to you on that question.
Okay. And then, just one more thing, I said that was the last, but I just remembered. We're seeing a lot of things in the news about children being affected, and so is there any kind of advice that you would like to give to live, people listening, related to kind of watching out for those kind of things?
Yeah, you know, this, we're learning so much more and more about this virus and the different symptoms and different kind of manifestations it can come up with, and there's been a lot of reports among children about having different unusual symptoms, some of them showing up very late, you know, after any kind of fever or cough has already gone away. Things like, you know, unusual rashes, redness in the fingers and toes. So I would just, you know, encourage folks, if you have, you know, especially if you have children, parents who have children, and your children are coming up with any unusual sort of skin changes, or rashes, or any other kind of unusual symptoms, to check with your doctor. We're, we're learning about these things all the time. Most of these, you know, the good news for children is most of these cases are very mild, although there have been reports of, you know, very serious cases in children, and even deaths in children, but fortunately, they've been extremely rare, and most children do well with this. But any kind of atypical or unusual rashes in children, it's good to check with your doctor about.
Thank you, Dr. Farinatano.
Okay. Go ahead, Supervisor Glover. Federal, I think you're muted. Federal, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Farinatano, this question is for you also, and it's going back to the issue of the PPE, in particular, the mask, and you were saying that the hospitals and health nursing homes are still seeing a shortage of those masks. And the ones that are being refurbished, are those usable because they are the M95s? Would they be able to be used in the hospitals and nursing homes?
Most of those ones that are being refurbished are not really qualified to perform at an N95.
I think Chris is muted. I think we can't hear the podium.
Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you so much.
So, so most of those repurposed masks, they're not considered at that safety level of an N95 level of safety, so we're really using those as a more of a surgical mask or a medical-grade mask, which is a lower standard of protection, which still can be used for a lot of different settings, and first responders, and very, other low-risk medical settings, but not in the kind of high-risk settings where the N95 masks are required.
Okay, because I know that my office and also Supervisor Joya have taken quite a few of the masks and working with, I think it's Warwind Wheelchair, and they've actually turned over quite a few masks, so there's a lot out there, and I can, I plan, and I think Supervisor Joya had the same, to continue to work with them.
Yeah, we took 10,000, and we need 10,000 more.
Yeah, and they're available to do those. I was also contacted by another entity that is willing to also repurpose some of the masks. And just wondering, one of the questions that was asked of me is that the ones that we have done through Warwind, they have the double band on them? And is it okay to have those with a single band?
They're, they're okay to use as a single band when you're, again, using it sort of as that medical-grade mask situations. So, you know, for the, when you're using it on an N95 level of protection, they require both bands to be used properly.
Okay, that's helpful. So, thank you.
Okay. And Chris, while you're up there, I wanted to ask you a question, because it's, it's come to me from several different sources. With these five indicators that the Bay Area officers are relying upon, are they all of equal weight? I've had a few people come to me and say, okay, you know, your first indicator was that our hospitalizations remain flat and declining, and the second indicator is that we're not seeing our ICU beds, our, our ability to take care of people in the hospital, that's declined as well, and so we're already there. We shouldn't have to worry about the other three, which is, of course, is the testing, the tracking, and dealing with the supply of PPE. Do you want to comment on why they are or are not of equal value as indicators for the health officers?
Well, the first two indicators, the cases and the hospitalizations, really tells us where we are, and, and really, because there's a lag between the time someone might pass the virus to somebody else, to the time they might get symptoms and diagnosed, and the time they might get in the hospital. It's really a flexion of where we were two or three weeks ago, because there's, there's some lag time there. The, the PPE metric really is a part of the sign of how prepared we are to protect our healthcare workers and first responders, and prevent spread within that setting. And then the, the testing metric is really how we are able to really be aware of what's going on. If we're not testing enough, there may be spread in our community that we're not identifying. And so, so we're kind of flying blind if we're not having enough testing. And it, and it really tells us we could be seeing, there could be a surge going on, and because the hospital numbers, you know, lag so long, we could be missing a surge, and then, you know, we don't, what we don't know, we can't take action on, so we can't, you know, we can't identify those individuals to isolate themselves that are going to continue to spread within the community. And so then that final metric of, you know, contact tracing is our ability to, you know, for those who are, do test positive, to be able to make sure they're isolating, make sure their contacts know they've been exposed, and that they're separating themselves, you know, from the essential work, or being out in the community, in the grocery store, and not continuing to spread. So they're measuring different things, but they're all really essential if we're really going to open up our society back to a more normal level of behavior, because even if our cases are low, we know that if we open things up, and people start interacting a lot more, and we, we aren't able to catch those, that early surge and block those spreads, we are going to get back into a situation of uncontrolled spread.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate that. The other question I have for you is, where with you and the other health officers, because we know there's sort of a goal to be consistent within the Bay Area officers, do you start anticipating relaxing the ability of small groups to get together? For example, you know, close friends, family, who both may have been quarantining appropriately or sheltering at home appropriately, starting to gather to create their own little bit larger, but pods that are still safely sheltering at home?
So the Bay Area health off, health orders have been more restrictive than the state, but we are gradually, step by step, loosening them up, and we're still moving a little bit slower than the state, but we're moving in the same direction as the state. Currently, the, the state orders do not allow those gatherings outside of your household, so most of those are actually in Stage 3. So until the state gets to Stage 3, the Bay Area won't be able to, it won't be allowed anywhere in the state, including in the Bay Area.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Karen, please go ahead, and then we'll take our, any callers we have. So please, Karen.
Thank you. And Dr. Farinatano, just follows up on a question that Supervisor Burgess asked. Just for the general population edification, both Supervisor Anderson and I are on the ad hoc committee on how to provide input, and we're meeting this Thursday, and we're going to take up sports and recreation. And the reason I'm mentioning this is because, and we're going to try and clear this up on Thursday, but I've received a number of questions and/or statements, if you will, that we're going to start Little League, or we're going to start this or that, because different kinds of equipment and different things. And I know under the sports, it says those are only allowed as a camp, I think that's under the sports, as it relates to childcare... under the sports, as it relates to childcare for essential workers, but then under caring and education, it's sort of broadens that. So I, I know the gentleman had the public comment on soccer, but I, I just sort of want to put it out there that, based on what I'm hearing you say, Little League is not taking care of children of essential workers. So we're going to have some clarification and some discussion of that on Thursday at 1:30 for those who wish to join us. Thank you.
Now, although Chris, Chris and I have this discussion at almost every public forum we're on together. Do you want to just describe, because there is sort of that, you know, my understanding in, because we've got these compatible FAQs and compatible parts of the order, that this ability to offer classes and camps is not just for essential workers, but it is for anyone who is allowed to be worked-
We lost your voice, Supervisor Anderson, at the very end, but I think I got most of your questions, so. The, you know, with the May, the order that went into effect May 4th, it added additional air, types of work beyond what was the essential work. So it added all construction, as well as outdoor work, and outdoor, certain outdoor recreation. So the, the childcare provision was broadened to, to really include essential workers, as well as any other workers who are allowed to work in, under the, the stay-at-home order, and that includes people who are working from home, because as we know, many people are, are working in businesses, but they're working remotely, or working from home, and they still need, you know, childcare. Because as, as a parent of a, a small child, you know, it's impossible to work from home with, and, and still take care of that child. So, and the definition of childcare has really expanded to, you know, it's, it's children and youth, so that's up to, you know, under age 18. And so many aspects of childcare in, in the summertime include camps. And so those same sort of guidelines on childcare apply to other type of educational or camp-type activities, but they have to be in those same kind of guidelines. We're talking about groups of 12 children or less, 12 children or teens or less, in a stable group. We don't want people in one group one day, and one group the next day. And the adults that are working close with them also need to be in a stable group. So we don't want, you know, a, a teacher working with one group on Monday, and another group on Tuesday, and another group on Thursday, because that's going to lead to spread between groups. So, so those are the-
Can I misspoke? When I said essential workers, I, I meant the kind of workers you were talking about. I just wanted it out there that, you know, if you're, want your kid to participate in Little League, you can be working, you cannot be working. I think there are still going to be those who think that that can be done. But I appreciate the broadening of that, and you're right, you can be working from home and still need childcare.
Yeah, and, and it has to be defined as a camp, and, and sort of, you know, under those parameters.
Right, rest of the 12 in the stable group.
Right, and you can have league play and different teams, which makes it much more challenging to field a baseball team with six on each side. But, but anyway, we, we can discuss that at our Thursday ad hoc meeting, so.
Well, that is why I wanted to bring it up, because Diane brought up the soccer, and it, it, there has been some ambiguity. So for those who want some specifics, Thursday would be the right place to find that out.
Okay, so at this time, if there are not any additional, oh, Federal, one more comment from you, and then we'll go to our public comment. Please, go ahead, Federal. Federal, you're muted.
Trying to follow instructions and do it right, but-
That was good.
Chris, and, and one of the things I think you talked to a little bit earlier is graduations. How is, how is that going to be handled? Are you still working out the details on that?
So, so working, you know, closely with the schools, and with Lynn Mackey, the superintendent of schools, we, we issued guidelines on what types of ways to have some kind of a recognition, graduation recognition, that fits within the, the current health order, that are generally type of a drive-by type of a ceremony, where, you know, one student at a time could, you know, drive by and pick up a diploma, and get some kind of recognition that way. We're working on another ordinance that would allow for drive-in, small drive-in type of ceremonies. So that is, you know, currently allowed under the state order, but not under the local order. So we're working to, again, we're, we're trying to move towards the state order, but a little, a little bit slower pace, and gradually aligning with, with the state order. So that would allow, under, you know, certain restrictions, drive-in events of, of a small nature, where people stay in their cars, there's some spacing between the cars, there's only a few people running the ceremony who are out of their cars at any one time. So we're working on, on the details of that, and we hope to have that ready to go and pub, public within the next week.
Okay, one of the things I'd just say is that there was a great model of possibility done at Deer Valley last week, where they picked up their cap and gowns, and that seemed to be something that modified could be very workable.
Yeah, I think, I think our, a lot of our schools have been very creative in figuring out how to still recognize their, their graduates in this time where we still need to stay apart.